You have a follow. Thank you for the stay. The city of which we live guide us this evening as we make our decisions.
Amen.
This is the November twenty-third regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of November the fifth, uh, ninth before you. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. We also have the minutes for the work session, Papa Road Annexation, November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion. We adopt those.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carry. Uh, tonight we have several, uh, or not several, but two, uh, appointments to boards and commissions. The first one, Mr. Kritko is development authority.
Yes, I'd like to renominate Mr. Jim Markle.
Second.
Motion, the second, we go, renominate Mr. Jim Markle to serve another term on the development authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carry. The next one, if you don't mind, let's put on the next agenda, Mr. Cramer. Thank you. Annual report this evening from the Planning Commission, I believe. Mr. Smith is here this evening to present. Thank you for being here. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. I'm Proctor Smith. I am the current chairman for the Planning Commission, and I'm here to give our annual report this evening. If you could, the next slide.
Yeah. Proctor, excuse me, would you just speak up just a little closer there?
There you go. How's that? Good?
Better.
Picking it up? All right. So, uh, for those who are not familiar with the Planning Commission and what we do, we are a seven-member board that is appointed by the council to three-year terms. Uh, the current, um, commission is made up of myself as chairman, Chris Hunt as vice chairman, uh, Alton West, Clay McIntyre, Fred Hamlin, Bob Coggan, and Joe Crane, Jr. Uh, the, the tenure on the current board ranges from two years to in excess of twenty years and everything in between. So we've got, uh, we've got a good, uh, diverse group, uh, of backgrounds and perspectives, and, uh, I'll just tell you that for all the time I've been on the board, it's just a great group of people, uh, dedicated folks that are on that board, and, and, uh, we really appreciate the consideration that the council gives when they make those appointments. It makes a big difference, and it's greatly appreciated. Um, next slide. Just some of the responsibilities, uh, that the Planning Commission is responsible for, the things that we do. We make recommendations on rezonings and annexations as well as text amendments. Obviously, those recommendations are forwarded to the council for final consideration. We're responsible for approving and denying special exceptions and variances in our planned developments. These are, uh, developments such as Summer Grove, Avery Park, Calumet, and Steelwood Farms. We provide guidance, uh, during the comprehensive plan updates. Those happen, uh, approximately every five years. We are responsible for approving certificates of appropriateness in our downtown design and historic residential overlay districts, and, uh, we also approve design variations in our quality development corridors, as well as the building exterior quality design overlays. So these are your, uh, commercial corridors such as Bull's Burrow, uh, the bypass, Lower Fayetteville Road, all your major thorough, thoroughfares in, into the city. Um, they have certain architectural requirements, and any time that somebody wants to deviate from those, we would oversee those as well. Next, next slide. So you can just kind of see, this is a chart that shows you, uh, the applications that we've seen, uh, throughout the year. You can clearly see that the big portion of that, the COAs, those are certificates of appropriateness. Uh, these are, for the most part, going to be commercial applications and primarily, uh, applications in our downtown, our central business district. So, uh, this is something we'll talk about a little bit later. Um, followed by text amendments. There were three text amendments. These are amendments to the zoning ordinance, uh, two rezoning applications, one master sign application, and one annexation request. There were no, uh, special exception or variance request for this year. Next slide. You can kind of see how this compares, uh, from activity over previous years. Uh, rezonings are down, uh, from two thousand and nineteen. Uh, a big part of this is, uh, certainly due to the current moratorium we have on multifamily. Uh, you, uh, certainly would have seen more rezoning applications, uh, were it not for that. Um, also, to a degree, you're going to see fewer rezonings as you have fewer vacant land to develop. We tend to see most of the rezonings on vacant property as opposed to redevelopment of existing property. So I think it's just a function of that. Uh, we're pretty much on par with annexations, uh, the same that we had for two thousand and twenty, down slightly from, uh, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, for the special exceptions and variance requests, the planning commission does not typically see a lot of those, or are generally handled by the, uh, Board of Zonering and Appeals. We only see those if they're for those, uh, planned development districts that I mentioned earlier. The, the master sign plans, those, we don't see a lot of those. Those are for your major commercial tracks, uh, things such as Walmart, uh, your car dealerships commonly come in under a master sign plan, things of that nature. Uh, certainly, uh, the thing that we've seen a big uptick in are the certificates of appropriate request. Uh, this was the most that we've ever seen, with exception of two thousand and eighteen, and again, that's, uh, coming predominantly in our downtown central business district. Um, we are pretty typical for what we're seeing for text amendments. We average two a year. We had one addition one this year, that being with the addition of the package store language to the zoning ordinance. Next slide. So just, uh, current trends that we're beginning to see, uh, starting to see some requests for the use of some alternative materials in our QDC, that quality development corridor. Uh, specifically, you're starting to see more requests for the use of these metal and aluminum composite panels. Uh, you typically see these a lot on car dealerships, see them a little bit, uh, to a lesser extent on some of your, uh, fast food, uh, restaurants, things of that nature. But essentially, construction materials, construction techniques always advance faster than regulations do, and so, you know, we respond to those, and as people bring alternative materials for us to review, uh, we look at them and see, number one, is it going to be a quality, uh, material, and number two, is it in keeping with our, uh, these quality development corridors that we have? Um, also seeing more requests, obviously, for townhomes, multifamily, condo ownership, and rental properties. Um, I mean, this is certainly being driven to a large degree by the fact that, uh, the cost of your single-family products are going up. You know, development costs, real estate costs, construction materials and labor all bring those, uh, pricing, uh, pricing products up, and so you're essentially beginning to price people out of some of those traditional single-family products and pushing them into more high-density and rental. So, uh, we're seeing more of that, uh, as you well know by the moratorium put in place, so we can kind of get our arms around some of that. Um, and we are seeing more requests for renovations to existing buildings, especially in our downtown, um, central business district. Um, and of course, another, one other item that's not on the slide, we just, uh, recently saw our sub, first submittal under the new mixed-use zoning. We're probably likely to see some more of that going forward, especially with some redevelopment, uh, opportunities in the, in the city. Next slide. So just some items, uh, that we're going to be looking at for future discussion. Um, minimum housing standards for rezoning and annexation requests, especially, uh, rezoning for requests for higher-density uses. Um, and annexation requests, we just want to be sure that we're getting, uh, on the submittals a level of detail so that we can clearly see what type of products are being proposed and how they're likely to be, uh, used going forward. Um, how do we ensure quality workforce housing? We've, uh, kind of touched on this. Essentially, you just want to be sure that the workforce, the people that you have, uh, working in the city are able to live in the city. So you're, you're trying to provide for a variety of housing, uh, types, uh, for, for everyone in the city. Um, updates to the quality development, uh, overlay district, the permitted materials list, again, as construction materials and, and techniques change. We're constantly reviewing, um, the, the different items that come before us that people are proposing, so we're, we're constantly looking at those. And finally, the downtown design overlay regulations. I think this is going to be, uh, something that we definitely want to look at, uh, going forward. Uh, it's no surprise to anyone that our downtown is thriving, and that's a good thing, but certainly brings with it some challenges. You know, as more and more people want to be a part of our downtown, uh, we just, you want to try to mitigate the impacts to the infrastructure. Um, and you want to, you want to allow for some architectural creativity while maintaining the overall character of our downtown. So we just need to be sure that our, uh, those ordinances have the type of language, uh, that we need them to have so that we can ensure all those things. So that's pretty much the extent of the presentation. I would, uh, be happy to try to answer any questions from the council.
Council members have any questions, Mr. Smith?
Great report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, very comprehensive. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Council member Jenkins has the privilege tonight of introducing our Noonan Youth Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have members of the Noonan Youth Council. Um, they are required, come to, um, one meeting a year in order to report back to their fellow Noonan Youth Council members what happened and to learn more about how we operate as a city. So tonight, we have with us Reese Pelakis, if you would stand up so everybody can see, Lauren Johnson, DeBria Wells, and Stella Weaver.
Thank you for being here.
They are from Heritage, East Coweta, and Noonan High.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you. Uh, do we have anything tonight?
Actually, I do. Um, there's a member of this elected body celebrating a monumental birthday. Um, and, uh, I, I'm not going to tell the age of that birthday because that would not be becoming of mind, the way I was raised.
Because it would be the last thing you ever tell.
Now that you know you're celebrating that monumental birthday.
Yes, we do.
I had a little bird help me today. Um, she lives on Sherwood Drive, and on behalf of the staff, we want to say happy birthday, Mayor Brady. We hope you enjoy, um, your day and, uh, many more to come. So happy birthday.
That was safe play, having the chief deliver.
That's even better. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for that consideration. And I don't have anything this evening. Uh, under new business. Uh, the next item, uh, you all have a letter at your desk. Uh, the next item is, uh, the, as a request from the, uh, the developer is being postponed until, until a future date, uh, not named, but is not on the agenda for this evening. The next item on the agenda, item G, is a consideration for holiday pay resolution. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion, and second, we adopt the resolution for holiday pay as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. The next is consideration of a resolution in support of each of the five transportation projects for two thousand and twenty-two, transportation improvement projects, the tip, uh, project solicitations. Uh, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Claw, how are you this evening?
I'm great, Mayor and council.
Any comment?
Actually, I have a couple of questions and concerns.
Questions, good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
I have, um, had some residents on Jackson Street, um, express some major concerns about the concept plan that is before us. Um, I realize that this is about, um, applying for funding and not necessarily about approving the plan. However, I think that at this point will be the time to interject in that, um, there are some concerns about this particular design. And so I have a few questions about the scope of this project as a total project, as opposed to just what this funding is for. Is this project going to address the drainage issues that some of the residents on that street have been, um, concerned about over the years, and they are concerned that it will create further damage to their properties, um, with the design? So I'm, I'm trying to find out if this design is simply, um, meant to meet the requirements of the grant, or are we going to go deeper to try and solve some of these issues?
This, this project is, uh, we call it a streetscape project, a gateway project. As you, as you know, we've, we've done the, um, the streetscapes out Greenville Street, and we've done them out Clark and Temple, and so we decided that Jackson Street was next, and, uh, we, uh, hired integrated science and engineering to come out there and kind of scope the workforce. We aren't even at concept yet. We would consider this preliminary concept, just enough to, uh, have the data to submit to the ARC to get some grant funding. Um, it's comprehensive. It's more than just sidewalks. Um, they've identified problems with the existing storm sewers, uh, wa, and the water and sanitary sewer, the pavement conditions, the curb reveals, uh, traffic calming measures. It, this, if, the way we envision it, this would be a comprehensive plan, and it would solve all of those problems.
Thank you for putting that on the record. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I don't know. I have, I have a comment and maybe a, a question in there somewhere in regards to the, uh, the roundabout there on Summerland and where the school is on Lower Fayetteville Road, proposed roundabout. I'm, I'm just, I mean, traveling that, that road quite often. I'm not real su, please help me understand how a roundabout is going to solve the problem there at, at that particular intersection, which is, which is a mess.
This is the Lower Fayetteville Road project.
Right.
We are about to lock down the concept on that project. We're pretty far along, and, uh, one of the, uh, the, uh, requirements by GDOT and Federal Highway is that you have to do what they call ICE. It's an intersection control evaluation. It's a worksheet, matrix, and you, uh, you go through, uh, the criteria, the traffic counts, turning movements, current and projected, and you, uh, essentially, you have to show that the roundabout is not the best alternative. And, um, it was shown that the roundabout was the best alternative here, and as you will recall, we came before you earlier, and you all passed a resolution in support of all five roundabouts in this project. So it's going to be pretty hard to change anything at this point.
I guess I'm not really asking you to change it. It's just more of an observation. Having Shenandoah, we've got, we'll have, uh, five roundabouts, is that right?
Right.
In that area.
You should be assured that through the engineering studies that, 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 that would be a good alternative.
I would like to be assured. However, anyway, I, I, I hear it from a lot of people on, on that side, so just, it was just more of a comment, not really a question.
Sure, okay.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are the, uh, citizens on, say, Jackson going to be able to have a say-so? Are you all going to have any kind of public?
Oh, yes. We, we will be required, with federal funding, we will be required to go through the planned development process.
Yep.
That includes a number of public information open houses, and we've already conducted one at the scoping level.
Right.
And invited people in, and we actually had some private meetings with some that were not able to attend.
And I, I had told some of the citizens that they would have a chance to voice their concerns at some of these, so thank you.
Yes, sir, they will.
Reiterating that.
That's an important part of the process.
Thank you. Mr. Kritko.
And I have one, I guess, I guess also a comment about the Lower Fayetteville. I know everybody thinks there's a lot of traffic in there. There's also that concept of the induced demand and all that that I've been reading about a good bit lately, that when you widen it, it just increases. It temporarily fixes the traffic. Long-term, though, that there's, uh, it brings bigger issues. Um, I think most of the traffic is getting over the interstate over the bridge there. Um, that's, that's the real bottleneck. So to me, it makes more sense if we widen, say, from Lo, from Greason Trail to, uh, Summerland, or at most Shenandoah. Uh, but then if we have four lanes going all the way to Laura Smith and then back down to two lanes, that's going to create another bottleneck. All it's doing is just moving our bottleneck and our traffic. Um, and I know this, this whole project is for that whole length and that whole span, but I think the, that entire scope and looking at the to, overall cost, it may be worthwhile, you know, and I don't know how much, uh, I don't remember offhand how much, you know, they're looking, you know, the, I know as a share, uh, for them to cover, but from, say, you know, either Summerland or Shenandoah all the way to Laura Smith, if you take that part out, uh, it would definitely save on the cost. My other concern is for that section, it's going to change the very nature of that residential section. There's homes, it backs up to. There's homes, it backs up to Summer Grove, it backs up to White Oak, you know, and that area over there, that when you start widening that, it's going to create, it's going to just change the very nature and character of that road.
No question. We were in the phase where the traffic studies that we conducted pretty much determined the logical termini of the project and showed where the traffic would fall off to where it didn't need the four lanes, and it went to Laura Smith Road. We've established that as the logical termini, and we would design the project from the Greason Trail to Laura Smith Road, where we already have let ARC and Georgia DOT know that we want to implement in phase, and the first phase that we would focus on and try to fund construction for would be from the bypass to Noonan Crossing Boulevard East.
Okay. And just kind of follow-on question then is, at the terminus of Laura Smith, then, when you go from four lanes to two lanes, you know, you're creating that constricting traffic. What is, what's the plan? I mean, what's going to happen with the traffic? Is it backs up there? What is the proposed, or what do you think is going to happen with the traffic there? And then a second part of that question is, as I understand, the county's not on board with expanding their section, you know, past that, and that's why it's the natural terminus for us. If the county were to expand it, would that alleviate any of those problems?
Well, it would, but a traffic study would have to show that. There is a considerable right turn movement at Mary Freeman Road, so a lot of the traffic will pretty much fall off at Mary Freeman Road, and it's just a logical taper down to Laura Smith Road next.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, if there are any other comments or discussion, we'll call a question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next is a consideration of list of streets proposed for maintenance under the local maintenance improvement grant known as LMIG. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, we approve the list as presented, any questions of Mr. Clark? Yes, sir. Yes. Mr. Clark, we, I've talked with you and staff about West Washington and Salbeedie, and I'm trying to push, especially West Washington, that's a 20 on a scale, which is much lower than all the others, so, if we could somehow get West Washington and Salbeedie at a later date, but I've been pushing and pushing for these streets for years.
Yes, sir.
And they're bad, and I know we've talked about it, so, appreciate it, what staff can do.
Mr. Craver was able to pull up my old email that showed the cost estimate for West Washington, and I thought it would be $1,194,000 by itself, and that typically takes up our entire LMIG budget, so we usually try to go for those projects as special projects outside the LMIG.
We can come back to you at a time, maybe it's a special.
And I understand that, but it'll come a time when West Washington is going to need it, because it's, I mean, it's bad.
I'm ready.
And the scale is, on your rating, it's 20.
It's in the twenties.
No one else has a 20.
Yeah.
So, thank you for listening.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Okay, if there's not anything else on this, I do have a motion and a second, I'll call a question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next several items are public hearings regarding the demolition of structures at various locations. Mr. Stevenson's here tonight, and he's going to step us through this. I'm going to open one public hearing. This public hearing is going to be for hearing on 50 Murray Street, 53 Murray Street, 54 Murray Street, 65 Murray Street. So, we'll handle all of the public hearings at one time on all of these four different properties, calling them one at a time. Mr. Stevenson, let's start with 50 Murray Street.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. 50 Murray Street, you can see the photo there, and all the other properties are very similar in nature, built nearly the same time, all more than 50 years old, all purchased by the City of Noonan and owned currently by the City of Noonan, and we desire to demolish those at your pleasure, so we can do a rebuild in that area.
So, is there any historic significance to this?
There are no historical significance of the houses themselves, other than they all are located in the Cotton Mill District.
All right, like you. Any questions, council, on 50 Murray Street?
I do. And this is going to be a general question for all of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, have we looked at these in detail to see if there is any way to save these houses and rehab them, basically, as opposed to tearing them down?
Well, they all are rehabable, depending on how much money you're willing to spend on them. So, one of them is burned, I think that's the, I think that's the fourth one, 65. No, the burned one is already on our list to be demo, scratch that. The other three, you can see that they're all pretty well dilapidated, porches are caving in, I have not done any substandard inspections on them, we certainly can do that, and come up with a cost estimate if you would like to rehab them. Before you, in the tax records and on my notes are the costs on the tax records of the assessed value of the structures, and most of these will easily exceed the assessed value, the 50% cost that we normally use for a substandard house.
Yeah, I'm asking the question because they are in a historic district, and I don't, I have not been out there, so I do not know what kind of situation they're in, but I think that before we just blanketly tear them all down, I think some sort of analysis of whether or not these homes would be livable if we were to rehab them, and the cost benefit of doing so, or the cost benefit of tearing them down and saying, hey, we're better off starting all over. But I don't want to skip, I think, that very important step in determining the value of the existing structures.
Well, that's certainly up to council.
Right.
At your discretion.
That's who I'm addressing.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone here in the audience like to speak to the issue of 50 Murray Street? Okay, see no one come forward. I'm going to ask to answer that very general question that councilwoman has asked for all four of these properties. There's no need to move through the rest of the discussion if, in fact, the council wants to proceed the way she has suggested. Anyone?
You're asking, do we want to make a motion for?
No, there's no motion yet, because we're in a public hearing, but is there any desire to postpone, because what she's asking would postpone the demolition of these properties so the city could go out and evaluate each property for the rehab of each property and cost estimates, I would think, on the rehab of the properties, which?
There's no desire from my part, because the way I look, I've been by them and sit in front of each one of them, the way I look at it, I would have to ask you, how long have they been in that condition, and what did the city do to bring any type of encouragement to the owners to rehab and bring them up to standard? They've been this way for quite some time, that would be fair to say, correct?
Yes, sir. I think, let's go ahead and add to that about how we acquire them, why we acquire them.
To me, the logical prudent thing to do is to, I think they've already been assessed, sounds to me, properly, the logical thing and prudent thing to do, again, is to start all over with them and create a new habitat, or a new house, or a new project that could go in there, which could be productive. I understand they're in a historic area, but these houses are not, well, they're just, quite frankly, just run down, you can't live in them, and to rehab them is, I would be, it'd be excessive. I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason to evaluate.
Any other desire to take the time to reevaluate all the properties for rehab? All right, we'll continue on with the public hearing then, the next house is 53 Murray Street. Mr. Stevenson?
Same situation, here's the photo. The roof has been in disrepair for several years. We have had many properties on this street that have been torn down in recent years and have had several code issues. Of course, they were held in abeyance with the COVID, and now we have the tornado issue, but that's 53 right there, and the historical aspect is the same as the previous one, it is in the Cotton Mill District.
All right, thank you. Anyone here that would like to speak to the issue of 53 Murray Street, you'll need to come forward and state your name, please.
My name is Phyllis Hilton, and I stay at 53 Murray Street. I've been standing like 17, 18 years, you know, love my little place. I know I had a lot, I got a lot of damage on top, I got a lot of damage in the inside a little bit, too, but I just want to know what y'all going to do about my house or the rest of the houses on Murray, I just want to know what's going on over there.
Yeah, that's why we're having the hearings this evening. The hearing before us is to demolish the structure at 53 Murray Street, if it's approved by council.
Okay. And I just want to know when the last day I need to be out.
That would be a time that we set after the public hearing, there'll be a resolution that we set.
Okay.
And there'll be an amount of time for each individual structure.
Okay.
Mr. Sears, do you have?
Well, I was just going to say that at the time we closed on them, all of the tenants were given 60 days, all right, so we closed in September, so technically, the 60 days has expired for the tenants to get out, all right? Now, if you want to extend that, because the motion in this instance is not like an unsafe structure to repair or demolish. The motion here is just to approve the city demolishing. So, if the council wants to extend her time to remove from the premises, then that should be part of the motion on the demolition. Otherwise, if you approve it, the city could go out there tomorrow, or we could file a dispossession, because that time has expired.
It's understandable, thank you, Mr. Alexander. Yes, did you receive that notice, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak on 53 Murray Street?
No, I'm here alone.
I might ask her how much time she feels she might need to be able to vacate the premises.
Ma'am?
Oh, I just want to have my last Christmas and my last Thanksgiving there.
We understand that, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
And I'll just say, we have extended one until December 31st already.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for being here this evening. We'll move on then, Mr. Stevenson, the next one is 54 Murray Street.
Yes, sir. This one is vacant now, the porch is very much dilapidated, went on it today, and it's very soft, but like the others, it's an older house, and it does not have any historical value, other than it is in the Cotton Mill District.
All right, let's go back up to 50 Murray Street, is it vacant?
Yes, sir. 50 Murray Street is vacant, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. We are speaking right now of 54 Murray Street, is anyone here from the public like to speak to the issue of 54 Murray Street? 54 Murray Street. All right, thank you. Without any comment from council, I'll move on to 65 Murray Street.
And this is the last of the buildings, it is currently occupied, and the owner, the occupant has been given an extension to vacate, like Mr. Sears mentioned earlier. This is the, one of the better ones on the street as far as the condition of the house, I have not been in the house, but like the others, it is in the Cotton Mill District, it is over 50 years old.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone here like to speak to the issue of 65 Murray Street? 65 Murray Street, anyone else in the audience like to speak to the issue of 65 Murray Street? Okay, any other comments from council regarding any of these properties? I would like to, if we do go ahead with the demolition, at least wait until after the first of the year. Right. Including 50, 54, and 65, that way it doesn't cause any kind of disruption with Ms. Hampton in her, around her. All right? What I'm going to do now is close the public hearing on this issue, and then entertain a motion regarding these properties. So, Mr. Alexander, if I'm hearing you correctly, even the vacant properties, you would want to extend the demolition until what, January 30? January 1st. What, Ms. Hampton, what are you thinking, when do you think you could be out? Well, she'll need to come forward and speak, so our sound system can pick her up. I was, I was actually offering an extra 30 days to the end of January. January 30th.
Okay, January 30.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If I might interject, can we make that January 31st, because that's a Monday, the 30th is a Sunday?
Sure.
Just the last day of the month.
Okay.
Thank you. That's my motion for all four, for until 31st of January 2023, 2022, 2022. All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, second came, okay. Any discussion on this, further discussion?
I just want to state, I appreciate what Ms. Jenkins was saying about, you know, looking at the refurbishment, you know, and I see that a couple of them still are habitated, inhabited, and I appreciate that, you know, you took the time, ma'am, to come down here and address us, because that is important, I appreciate you, you know, I understand and sympathize with you also about spending the holidays there. You know, out of all the houses, this looks like might be the most habitable one, however, it still looks like it needs a lot of work, you know, and unfortunately, it would grossly exceed the cost of the structure, you know, the assessed value, so, but I do understand what you're saying.
And just to comment, the intent of the city here is to turn these vacant lots, once they become vacant, over to the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Authority, so that they can go out and hire contractors to come in and build appropriate housing up and down Murray Street. It's not to leave these lots empty, or to leave that neighborhood with just vacant lots, it's to provide decent, livable, affordable housing in that neighborhood, and that's the reason we're doing this. It's not, it's not to be punitive, but to provide decent housing, rather than what is there.
And the vacant houses that are there, the two, will be boarded up once we're finished here, and secured against unforced entry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I have a motion and a second then, to extend or to set the demolition of these houses at 50 Murray, 53 Murray, 54 Murray, and 65 Murray as January 31st, 2022. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, you said to set the demolition date as January 31st?
Well, there or after.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, right. Okay, the first available date for demolition will be January 1st, 30, 2020, 31st, 2022.
Gotcha.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next item is a consideration of the 2022 standing agreements and consideration of facility use policy for Picket Field, CJ Smith Park, and Noonan Pickleball called the Hop. How are you?
I'm good, how are you, Mayor and council?
Good.
I am here tonight to seek your, seek your approval on the renewals for the standing agreements. We were here at the beginning of the year and had a couple of discussions, not a whole lot is changing, we're recommending that you approve as they're scheduled. We've had just one addition by a vacated spot at Howard Warner Gym, and that is the Agape Love Dance Team, that is coordinated by Ms. Kenyatta Arnold, they are taking over Friday evenings at the gym, but that was already approved spot, so that doesn't change. The only other change, it's not working, Megan. Sorry.
You can just go to.
The only other, we have one new request that I'd like to... The only other, we have one new request that I'd like to present to you. It's a request that we've had for two years now and he's just patiently waiting. We did have one spot at Wesley Street Gym that was vacated by Empowered For Life when they did not renew. And so they are asking, this guy's asking for time at Wesley Street Gym. And I think we can accommodate them with no disruptions to individual rentals. They are in yellow on your, on your schedule. It's a Friday evening and a Sunday afternoon. He did say, though, that he is flexible on Sundays if we want to move that around. But, but I do think we can accommodate that with, it's just, it's just the four hours that he's requesting at Wesley Street. And only one of those is a new spot, the Friday night was previously approved. So those are the only changes for those standing agreements.
Any questions of Ms. Mosley regarding her recommendation here on the standing agreements and the use of, and, and the one new agreement?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion, a second to approve is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign, motion carried, thank you.
And then the second thing on the agenda for this is the approval for the rental process for the three new parks, Picket Field, CJ Smith Park, and the Hop, the Noonan Pickleball. We have, for the past couple of months, been operating under these policies and just are seeking your blessing on these. For Picket Field, we do have standing agreements on those as well because it is a primarily diamond sports, those are seasonal sports. So we have broken down those agreements into seasons, three-month seasons. And you can see those listed in your packet as well on the screen. We have one hour, one and a half hour time blocks and we have granted those time blocks, one per week per organization. Those are, those have filled up very quickly and they are filling up now for the next season. We do have one open spot right now. But that has seemed to work very well out there. And the individual field reservations are available upon, upon request, especially on the weekends, and that has been utilized as well.
I do have a question because I had the Noonan Outlaws, the Cobra Foundation, rather, indicate that they had applied for space on the field, but I don't see them on here.
He declined the offer. I spoke with him on the phone and told him what we had available and he didn't, he didn't want that spot.
And I have a quick question about the Hop. The Noonan Pickle, Pickleball Association, we're reserving those as part of that standing agreement. Is that free of charge to them? And then anybody else that wants to reserve is going to be charged?
They don't have to reserve and it is not, the Noonan Pickleball Association, they operate free to the community. You can be a member of the association, but you don't have to be. They have free clinics, free programs, and it does not require a reservation.
And so they're only reserving those that are in the blue boxes? Is that what you're saying?
Um, yes, on the, on the pickleball court.
Monday, Thursday, and Saturday?
Yep, on those, that, they're, they have different programs, different days of the week. Their standing reservation does change again with the season because they do a little bit more in the warmer months than they do right now. But they do have different clinics per age group, scalability level, that kind of thing. So it, it does change, but their court reservations do not change. They only have a set number of courts each time their seasons change, which leaves more than half the courts at a time open for public use. But again, even those programs that they have there that are taking up those courts are open to the public.
Okay, and then CJ Smith?
CJ is one that we are not taking individual reservations on. That one, the way it's laid out and the setup is, just makes it very difficult to have individual reservations. The splash pad being the, one of the main ones, being right there that close to the pavilion. If we resent, we reserve the pavilion, that's going to make it hard for the public to use or not to use the splash pad. We have had requests for it. We've not had any issues of people going out and utilizing the pavilion that's, when the splash pad was open for birthday parties and whatnot. The skate park is available for individual consideration for large regional events. We don't just reserve it and shut it down to the public just for a birthday party and whatnot. They can use it, obviously, it's open. But if someone wants to hold a large regional event, for events specific to the skate park, then they can come to us for individual consideration, which would probably then turn and come to you if needed.
Okay. Do you have a motion, a second, any other comments or questions?
I do have a question. Are we going to be, since you all have broken this up into seasons and all that, are y'all going to be coming back to us each season with this or is this?
I think what, what I would like to, for you all to vote on is to vote on the schedule and the structure that we have. And just like we do with the gyms is have, let, allow us to have the ability to put the people in those spots. Now, if we get, excuse me, to a point where we have more requests and we have space and time like we have in the gyms, then we would come every three months to request and have you guys grant permission to whomever gets the, gets the spot.
Any other questions, comments? I'll call the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, thank you.
And I just want to say, thank you all for the hard work because you guys have put in a lot of time and effort trying to figure this out to accommodate as many organizations with, at the same time, trying to make it so that it's worth their time to come in and try and use this. I recently came out of retirement to help coach cheerleading and, you know, with the Cobra Foundation. I coached for several seasons many, many years ago. And now my students, my cheer squad members are now coaches. And so they asked me to come back and help. And they're very robustly used by these organizations. And, and, and I have to say, I have to give kudos to the Noonan Outlaws Cobra Foundation because all of the cheerleading squads placed a competition last weekend.
That's awesome. That's great.
Counselperson, Jenkins, thank you for recognizing that. Maybe you might go to the next slide. I want to point out something just for your awareness. You know, the next one? Here shows that it's in your packet, the frequency of use. These facilities, you know, we have 365 days in a year. If you start to do some simple math, you'll notice that we have more than that many of events that occur. So Katie and the entire leisure service staff, seven days a week, 12 to 14 hours a day are ushering people in and out of these facilities. So thank you for recognizing that. And thank you to Katie and her staff for making it all happen.
It's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of that? Send, send the packet.
Yes, sir, we'll make it available for you.
I, I don't see it in my packet.
This, yeah, this table's probably not in the packet. This one is in the annual report.
Maybe it's in yours, but it's not mine.
No, sir, it's not in your packet. We'll make it available for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then. The next item is a consideration of a resolution for the 2022 City Council meeting schedule. I had one person here that wanted to speak to that issue, Mr. Lewis. I think we've heard your request before.
You have? I'll never like to, Spencer Lewis, Noonan, Georgia. I don't ever like to turn down the opportunity to speak to y'all fine folks. So as y'all are aware, the current standing arrangement of having the city council meetings on Tuesdays, particularly the evening meeting, conflicts with the other government agencies within Coweta County, particularly the Board of Commissioners and the School Board. So I would actually ask y'all to align y'all's city council meetings with the rest of the municipalities in Coweta County and schedule them on Mondays or another day that's not a Tuesday with them as well. Ideally, I'd like for all the meetings to be at for 6:30 or at 6:30, but understand if y'all want to keep some at 2:30, that's fine. But if y'all could move them to Monday or any other day that's not a Tuesday when everybody else meets, it'd be greatly appreciated. That way more people will have the opportunity to come and be engaged in their municipal government. Y'all do some fun stuff in here. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for your comments. Anyone on council want to amend the meeting schedule?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second to adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Mr. Cole, how are you this evening?
Hey, I'm doing great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're now in unfinished business. This is the second public hearing of the adoption of an update to the Development Impact Fee Ordinance.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council members. At the last council meeting, the council held the required first public hearing in regards to the update to the impact fee ordinance. I am here tonight to ask the council to hold the required second public hearing and to officially adopt the updated impact fee ordinance. I would be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to come forward and speak to the update of the Development Impact Fee Ordinance? This is a public hearing on the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council.
So move, second.
Motion, a second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Visitors this evening, this is a request from the Noonan Times Herald, who we have a representative here this evening who would maybe like to speak or not, I'm not sure. To set up a tent on the Court Square on November the 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to wrap gifts for the County Community Foundation. Thank you for that service, we appreciate your efforts there. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Since it's going to go in your favor, do you, would you like to speak? Motion and a second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion?
Is that going to be on the south side, north, what? I got her up to the speaker.
I'm going to speak after all. My name is Beth Neely, I'm with the Noonan Times Herald. Mr. Alexander, we were hoping to set up on the Court Square across from the Alamo and let them eat toffee, if that's all right.
Yes, perfect. The west side of the Court Square. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right, I do have a motion, a second, to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next is a request for the Rotary Club to allow for the Let Freedom Ring fireworks in July of 2022. Is there a motion?
So, sorry.
Second.
Motion, a second, we approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. We do have a reason this evening for an executive session for a legal issue. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Schell to read that motion.
I move we now enter to his closed session as allowed by OCGA 50-14-4 in pursuant to advice from the city attorney for the purposes of discussion legal and that we now, and we, that we in open session adopt the resolution authorizing director mayor presiding office executor affidavit in compliance with OCGA 50-14-4. This body ratified the actions the council has taken in closed session and confirmed that the subject matters in the closed session were within the exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion, a second, we enter to executive session for a legal issue. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. We're adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.